Good morning, everyone. So quickly it is, are you okay?
Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. It is nine o'clock now. We'll call this Board of County Commissioners regular meeting to order. March first, two thousand and twenty-two. Welcome to the beautiful spring month. So on that, Commissioner Tony Haas, would you give us an invocation, please? We're going to be silent to do my father, where he had, how about be that name? I can't remember. That will be done on our presidency. He was the state of the union. I think he was structured as such. He does. It's not temptation. Not the worst can be book. This morning, we also have a reminder from our Los Angeles County Sheriff, Mr. Derek Navarrete, and encouraging us to have a moment of silence for the remembrance of deputy, the loss of sheriff deputy, Mr. Travis Russell, who's passed on today. Today is his anniversary, so I will call for a moment of silence on behalf of Sheriff Navarrete and his department. And our prayers and thoughts are with the family of Deputy Travis Russell and with the sheriff department of Los Angeles County. Thank you. Commissioner Luis Lopez, would you give us the pledge of allegiance, please?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this telegraph. Commissioner Haas, here. Commissioner Luis Lopez.
I'm here.
Commissioner Luis Lopez. Here. Out of the agenda, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Commissioner.
I move to approve the agenda. Certainly.
Commissioner Luis Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Haas. Commissioner Luis Lopez.
Yes. Item number two, to a regular consideration, regular meetings for February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Do we have any questions, concerns? Will we see those minutes? We've read them. Any comments, discussion?
Mayor, Mayor Kean, motion to approve the regular meetings of February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Second motion.
Commissioner Haas.
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez.
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez.
Yes. Item number three, rating of correspondence, Commissioner Committee reports. Commissioner Luis Lopez, would you like to go first?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Good morning, everyone, and once again, thank you for that nice remembrance for Deputy Travis Russell on his anniversary. So again, our prayers for us, and our fellow county sheriff's deputies and county employees. On February seventeenth, Trinada Renewal Authority met. We had to change the date. Our normal meeting is the second Thursday of the month, uh, been the tenth, but we had to move the date. And I'm glad we did. We were able to move forward with one of the large bills and get that allotted. Urban Renewal is in, with the city of Trinidad, works collectively together on the Aperta project, on some of the infrastructure that was there. But we were able to meet to authorize a payment of ninety-seven thousand dollars to one of the contractors that would have waited another month. We haven't met a week later, so I'm glad we were able to do that. There's some language that is going to be corrected in the bylaws for urban renewal. And we also would like to invite anyone who wants to apply. We have some board vacancies for that committee for Trinada Renewal Authority. You can please contact Chairman Ed Grego, Ed Grego Insurance, or the city of Trinidad, Audrey Garrett, to inquire regarding applying to that board. Also, the chairman was selected for urban renewal and vice chair, and it will remain the same by majority vote. Ed Grego will continue as chairman of Tura, and Carol Holton, former city council member, will continue as a vice chair. On the twenty-second, Otero Partners Incorporated to commit. There's a growing interest from Warfino County to become part of the loan mechanism that Otero Partners Incorporated has to assist their community. However, since Otero Partners in Los Angeles County are in a bi-county mutual agreement or in a, in a government agreement with each other, it was best thought that they would join the region that suits them best. And at the time, it was been working out with the state. Cidcaraba has now afforded Warfino County to be part of Region Eight, which is the San Luis Valley. So we were going to be forwarding that information on, his name is Mr. Kevin Wilkinson and Mel Valletony, two Warfino County Commissioners, and hopefully they will be able to join Section Region Eight so they can also have this type of ability to have a lending mechanism for Warfino County. So it's another great tool and toolbox that we have there in Los Angeles County. The total assets for Otero Partners is six at one million, six thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars and three cents. And to the hard work of Dan Alberg, when I got on that board, I think we were about a hundred and fifty thousand. None of that was just six, seven years ago, not too long ago. Revolving loans are at sixty-eight thousand dollars right now. The rural collaborative is sitting at twenty-five thousand, and the CBGG revolving loan grant is two hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-one dollars. We have a lot of money to lend out for Otero and Los Angeles County. On Thursday, the twenty-fourth, I had a South Central Council of Governments special meeting, and we were able to discuss ongoing dues for members of the community that are allocated to South Central Council of Governments. They will be taking that up at a later date and will be informing the board today in executive session regarding Los Angeles County's dues. And on a high note, for South Central Council Governments, the award, an appointment to the Front Range Passenger Rail District was myself, so I'm thankful. I was appointed to this organization. We have to wait its first Senate approval, and then the governor to sign it, and we'll have one more voice at the table representing not just Los Angeles County, but Warfino County as well. And what I told the board after I was appointed, a big thank you as well, but not only will I be representing Los Angeles County, Warfino County, but also the Board of Council Governments, and nonetheless, for their direction on how they want me to represent that organization as well. So it'll be a true conglomerate of the three bodies, of Los Angeles County, Warfino County, and South Central Counties, representing the people of our region. That's all I have.
Commissioner, reservations, please. Yes, Commissioner Tony Haas.
February eleventh, had dual meetings. Colorado Counties Incorporated have their legislative update as well as Act Twenty-two, and their legis, their, both organizations have similar legislative concerns. Some of the introduced legislation involving Ag that will directly affect our count and rural Colorado are. House Bill eleven oh four, power line trails. This bill has changed drastically from its inception. Two of the most beneficial changes were no eminent domain would be used, and it would be voluntary for private property owners to participate. Senate Bill one thirty-eight, Senator Hanson's greenhouse gas emissions bill. This bill is a convoluted bill with many aspects, from insurance to fifty horsepower engines that are involved. This bill would be very detrimental to rural Colorado. It would ban small gas engines from lawnmowers, from the size of a lawnmower to fifty horsepower. That's like many of our small farm tractors that we use on farms and ranches. My, my concern was it would also include generators. This is disturbing because of the weather-related emergencies that would, that should stop the supply of electricity. Many in the rural communities use generators to stay warm during such emergencies, not to mention construction companies and many others that use these to, to power their power tools. House Bill twelve forty-four, the air quality standards bill. This, this bill is to protect air quality by limiting toxic emissions based on science and gives, my, my primary concern was it gives CDPHE the ability to regulate air quality even more stringently than the EPA does already. And then on February twenty-eighth, last night, the Environmental Impact Assistance Fund Committee, that I sit on that board, met to evaluate broadband grant applications for four applications that were submitted in the tune of six and a half million dollars, and they were awarded. That's my report, sir.
Thank you, Commissioners. Part of the report, both attending, has some of the meetings. Your Commissioners attend one or two of the same. But last week, we met at Denver, Colorado Counties Incorporated, and for two days, we went over on the nine steering committees, several of the bills that are coming down the pipe. I want to highlight a couple of them because I believe they're imperative to, to counties and to communities. One of the, one of the bills that came forward for us to address under general government, House Bill twenty-two eleven forty-two, basically requesting alcoholic, alcohol beverages extended service hours. This particular, currently, the law restricts the sale of malt, liquors, two hours between seven and two A.M. and restricts the self-fermenting malt beverages, two between the hours of eight and midnight. And so one of the, one of the requests in this particular bill is, is the sponsors of the bill are asking for specific, for resorts, for bars and/or dispensaries of alcohol to stay open until four o'clock in the morning and basically have an hour break and then open back up, which I can tell you that the Colorado Counties oppose that because that's going to be on our perspective and unfunded mandate for law enforcement officers. Certainly, we don't have the capacity to, to monitor what we currently have. To extend that, that would be an opportunity to increase expenses. So one of the, one of the questions I received yesterday from a constituent is, where does the county, or how does the county work with the rest of the counties to work with, with legislation? So in the early months of the summer, June, May, June, and onward, we come together as counties, and Los Angeles County can actually propose legislation if you find a house sponsor or a senate sponsor, something that would be impacting our county. Then we come together as all county, member counties, I believe there are sixty-one counties, sixty, sixty-one, somewhere around there, that are members of Colorado counties. What we do is we come together in September and we take a vote of the entire membership, what are going to be some of the priorities that CCI is going to move forward. And those priorities basically become the bills that are going to be pushing forward without much discussion, if you will, but at the end, we have strong debates. So September, and then in October, we take a position and take a vote, and then we select of all the priorities, which ones are going to make it to Priority One or to Priority B. Priority One basically go on and become, they get pushed through to the legislation, legislature, Two, in hopes to become law because all counties support that. Priority B is in the event that we have an opportunity, we'll take, if we kill one on December, we'll bring another one and replace. Pretty much, that's the, the process, and we have, we identified early on eight priority bills at CCI. And so they're moving forward, and as we go through the process, I'm looking at the bill table that we have on CCI. How counties vote. For instance, this extending the hours, we take a vote, and on that particular vote, it is called by the, by the committee chair person to debate, and then we go for a vote. And that is both Republican, Democrat Commissioners, and we cast a vote, and that's how we move that recommendation to the legislative representatives. And one of the things that CCI has that is so well-oiled machine, we have achieved a team of liaisons with the legislature. Some of them work directly only on Ag, some others work on general government, public justice and safety. We have Health and Human Services. So we have the knowledge within CCI to gather the information, bring it back to us so we can make a decision. And as Commissioner Tony Haas, the Friday before, we meet in Denver. We go through the process, no vote, but giving us an update. And then, of course, we have access to all the bills and the legislation that's going to be in front of us to make a, a decision. But I got a phone call yesterday from a constituent, and I felt that it was imperative that we put that on. And so, and also the bills that we are supporting and are opposing or, or monitoring, they are, there is a link, and if not, we'll put it up on Los Angeles County website so you all can take a look at what is it that we're working on. I want to share with you a couple more bills that, that we had an opportunity under general government to also debate. House Bill twenty-two eleven fifty-two, prohibit employer adverse action when medical marijuana is in use. So in a sense, the bill prohibits an employee from taking adverse action against an employee, including an applicant for employment who engages in the use of medical marijuana on the premises of the employer's during work hours or retail or medical marijuana off the premises of the employer during non-working hours. An employer is permitted to impose restrictions on employee use of medical or retail marijuana under specific and specified circumstances. House Bill twenty-two eleven fifty-two, you can only imagine the discussion that we have in this particular bill, it went back and forth, back and forth. And it is incredibly challenging because my, my comment to my group is, is we have dealt with this for the last, however many years we've been since marijuana was approved. And so the dialogic discussion is pretty rich, and I can tell you that when we take a vote, we take it very serious because we take in consideration the constituents and how that's going to be impacting our counties, you know, more than anything. I think when, when we put that type of, of legislation on a business owner, we're asking them to regulate pretty much at a different level than what they had given.
So if I may, as an employer of the community, I am opposed, that's one hundred percent. And number two, it behooves the employee not to partake in marijuana usage if they are to get injured on the job because, bro, once you're injured on the job, the first thing that comes is a drug test for workers' health insurance to kick in. And my employees, over the years, since it's been legalized, have been alerted to that, if they are to be hurt on the job and they test positive for marijuana, they could be possibly not eligible for workers' health insurance from the medical insurance company go through for that. So, you know, it's, it's, this is horrible. This is what our state has become. It's horrible, and, and I oppose it one hundred percent. Thank you for fighting that good fight.
You're welcome. Let me, let me add, there was, how many of you know what Kraton is? Okay, I didn't know, not until the Friday before we went to this legislative meeting. And so there is also, this was, this brought Senate Bill twenty-two dash one twenty, Regulation of Kraton Processors. And so we got a historical background and perspective on Kraton. I read on it before I went to the meeting, but there were some experts in the room that actually had done a lot of research on this. Apparently, this comes from Asia, is, if I understand it, the bill, the bark of a, of a, some Asian tree that actually could be used for medicinal things, but it also, according to the Mayo Clinic, there are loss of life has taken place because of the overuse of Kraton. So in any event, the, we, we were enlightened, ton of information. So we meet Thursday all day, and even at the end of the day, those of us that want to hang around there at the CCI office, which we do, we debate a couple more bills, getting ready for the next day. And so Thursday and Friday, very, very field days, and as my Commissioners nominated me for, to be the legislative liaison, I bring that information back to you. And I encourage that if you're interested in listening to what's going on on those meetings, there's a ton of information because sixty-four counties manage the, if you will, the local responsibilities of constituents and the legislature that's listened to what we have to say. So, might be.
Two more.
Sir. Yes.
Before you move on. So on the sixteenth of February, all three of the Commissioners met with Martinis Rail. This company is from Sydney, Australia, and will be putting the rail into the New Elk Mine. Some of the accomplishments are Gold Coast Light Rail in Queensland and Murray Basin Rail Project in Victoria. This forty million dollar project is projected to start soon. And PWP, I forgot to mention them, the Purgatory Water Partnership Board, the Baca Pick and Wire Ditches have submitted a grant and will be starting the new dam construction near Club Fourteen for the water diversion into their, into their box. Also, Tom Parry updated this on the Water Festival, and this year, the event will be downsized from sixty presenters to twenty-five, and all the demonstrations will be held outside. Sorry.
No, no, I, I, that's absolutely, so, you know, for those of you here and those of you online, this Board of County Commissioners is pretty active, both on, at the local level, at the state level, and at the national level. At the national level, we have an eye on the liaison as well for the state of Colorado, which gives us an opportunity to get information as to what's happening on that, what kind of recommendations we can make through, again, the membership that we have at CCI. So a lot of work and exciting days ahead of us. So no other reports, let's go ahead and move on to item number four, elected officials update. And we have a message from Sheriff Navarrete. He's, no comments, no, he's not available at this time. So let's go to County Assessor Joey Amaro. Thomas. Juror and Recorder. Ms. Patricia Lee Hill. Joseph. Los Angeles County Pressured. Mr. Onetti.
Good morning. I have been to be part of this time. Thank you.
Thank you. District Attorney, Mr. Henry Solano, or anyone from the Rattles. Los Angeles County Coroner, Mr. Junie Berger. Our County Surveyor, Mr. Terry. Okay. Let's move on now to, Mr. Ron Campbell, we have any people sign up for public comment?
No one's signed up.
Okay, and anyone online, if you're interested in using this opportunity for public comment? Unmute yourself. CNN, let's move on to item number six, six eight, presentations. We have this morning, Destiny Chapman with the United States Forest Service. Destiny, would you please come up to your chair?
Yeah, good morning.
Good morning.
I have with me John Lynn, who is a district ranger on the Comanche National Grassland. And really how that's kind of divided up. And I'm Destiny Chapman, the district ranger on the San Carlos Ranger District. My office is out of Canyon City. John's offices are out of La Jolla and Springfield. The way we're divided is pretty much, I have the national forest piece that's west of I twenty-five in the county, and John has the piece that's east of I twenty-five. So I provided some materials in advance of the meeting, some maps for the Commissioners to look at so you can see what the composition is of Los Angeles County, the national forest lands. There's about twenty-three thousand acres of the San Carlos Ranger District in the county. About sixty-one hundred of those are in the Spanish Pete's Wilderness, and about sixty-five thousand acres are on John's piece of ground, east of I twenty-five. So I just wanted to update on a few different things that we have going on, and John can provide an update for his piece of the country, too. If you have questions as I go through, please just tell her. On our fuels program, so in June of two thousand and twenty, I signed a decision document for a tri-hazardous fuels reduction project, and some of that does take place in Los Angeles County along the road up into the Purgatory Campground. So we do anticipate getting work on that this summer. Our friends, the Arkansas River Watership Collaborative and Purgatory Water Partnership, put in for a grant with the National Forest Foundation, and we're successful in getting that. So we will be doing some work along that Purgatory Road this, probably this June, July. That will be with volunteers, contractors, and forest service crews. So we look forward to getting that started.
Is, is that the road, I'm sorry, that goes up between North Lake and Monument Lake? And that, that range?
Yes, yeah, it goes right off at, at North Lake there.
Thank you.
State wildlife area there.
Because my kittens will be thanking you for up on that part of the road.
Well, I didn't say we're doing road work. We'll get to that in a second, but we're doing the fuel production work. We want to provide, there's a number of purposes for that project, and it's hazardous fuels reduction, and you all are aware of the forest health conditions in that area, but it's also, that's a very popular campground and recreation area. And so we want to provide a safety rest route for the public should we have a fire in the area, and also provide safer ingress for our firefighters as well. So we'll be doing a lot of thinning work along the roadway there. So wanted to thank the city of Trinidad and Los Angeles County because you guys did provide funding as a match for that ground. So we really do appreciate that. The San Carlos Ranger District was also awarded funding through the Joint Chiefs Program, which is a program with the Forest Service Chief and the Chief of the National Resource Conservation Service, or NRCS. So we partner with NRCS in our proposal, and some of those projects will take place in Los Angeles County over the next three years. We'll do some work along New Cordoba Pass Road, as well as finishing up some of that work along the Purgatory Road as well. NRCS is doing treatments on private land, and we've been working with Sammy Molinar, who's the representative on that project. So that's really exciting. We were the only project in Colorado that got awarded that funding this year, so.
Good job.
Yeah, looking forward to that. It'll be really great. Um, let's see, as part of that project, we'll also be doing some pile burning. So as we do some of those thinning projects, we'll generate piles of material that has been land and trimmed, and so we'll be doing pile burning when conditions are. And we'll certainly be in communication with you all when that happens. They're usually small hand-cut piles, so not big machine piles, but we will have some of that activity taking place. Generally happens in the wintertime when we have sufficient stuff on. Um, we do have a stakeholder group that we have created working with Arkansas River Watership Collaborative. We're just calling it the Central Arkansas Stakeholder Group. I know Commissioner Haas, we've been on their, on our calls a few times. And really, just the intent of that group is to bring a whole bunch of different stakeholders together and talk about what we're doing down the landscape so we can provide a holistic picture and try to figure out where we might have holes in some areas where we can tie treatments together, make them more effective across, you know, all land ownership types. So we do meet periodically, consists of stakeholders on Pueblo, Los Angeles, Warfino, Fremont, and Cusford County. So that, that group has certainly taken on a lot of momentum, and one of our products from that is an interactive GIS map so that our stakeholders can look at that, find out where treatments are, and use that in our grant application process, and also help inform their decision-making about where they might want to treat them.
So let me ask you, in that interactive GIS map, are you speaking of the entire county or only on the lands that you are?
No, it's, it's an interactive map for the five county area that I mentioned. So it, it crosses all boundary types.
Wow.
Yeah. So we think that'd be a really effective tool for folks, especially in light of some of the grant opportunities mentioned earlier. That could really tighten.
Sure, and then, you know, maybe we can follow up, upline on, I want to understand more on this particular mapping and how our county can actually use those services as well for, you know, I'm thinking of even search and rescue.
Yeah, um, definitely. Yeah, the map will be, I think we have it open now just to our stakeholder group, but I can share a link to that because there's information we can get from the county to, to populate that map on stuff that has been done. So I do believe that our work has been working with the GIS coordinators and with your emergency manager for the county in getting some of that information. But definitely, yeah, and if our mapping products can help with that.
Well, and recently, I'm asking you, because recently, we had a citizen that, and, and again, that was, was, there was a big group, search and rescue, and, and understanding. And I know most of our search and rescue individuals know the county better than any one of us. search and rescue and, and understanding, and I know most of our search and rescue individuals know the county better than any one of us. But if there was some additional information that they can rely upon by looking at this information, that would really be great.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and I will talk about an agreement to do search and rescue, where we can share some of those, those tools and that communication. Yeah, by all means, if there's materials we have during a search and rescue operation, we can certainly provide those, definitely. Still on the, the fuels and the fire realm, we do, we are working on a project. We had a workshop in 2019 that I think some county presence was at, where we looked at potential operational delineations, basically potential control locations of where we would look if we had a fire and have a fragmented landscape to have higher probability of success of catching that fire. So we drew some lines on a map, and so our next step is then to do some work on reinforcing those lines. And that feeds into that Katara hazardous fuels project that I mentioned, you know, doing work along roadways to make those better control locations if we're having a fire and have some, some better chance of catching it.
And to ask you, if I could ask on the fuel, or the mitigation of the fuel, does U S Forest Service have an opportunity to allow local residents to assist in removing of those, the timber to wood, so they can be utilized for firewood in their homes?
So, yeah, a lot of times the material reduction takes form in a lot of different ways. It could be a traditional timber sale, we can do commercial firewood sales. We'll be doing some mastication of the areas, too, but a lot of the work that we're doing is going to result in some piles and some fuelway opportunities for the public. So the public can be able to then buy fuelwood permits from us and have those opportunities to cut firewoods. That's one aspect of the project, yes.
The reason why I ask is when, if, and when that doesn't occur, that you reach out to our Fire Marshal, which is also our sheriff, Navarrett, to make sure there are no burn restrictions in place, which usually are tied to chainsaw restrictions as well at the time. So if, if that is allowed, please make sure that those are looked into before we open it to the public.
Yeah, we, we certainly will, and we'll coordinate that. You know, the fire restrictions on federal land are set by the federal agencies, and we definitely do try to coordinate that with the counties so that there's consistency. But especially Los Angeles County being so large, a lot of times you guys may be in fire restrictions due to conditions. Plains, where up in the mountains, we may have snow, so there's times where John on his district could be in fire restrictions in Los Angeles County, but in San Carlos, I'm not going to be because of the elevation to that.
Yeah, and I think the board has given latitude with the Fire Marshal of each district to allow or not to allow in that region of their, of their fire predation, so.
Yeah, we, we do coordinate with the county when we do go into restrictions, so that there's awareness. But there are times when the county may be in restrictions over on federal land.
Thank you.
Talking about forest health, I provided some maps to the commissioners, as well as a link to, to a G I S story map, as well as the aerial surveys. And so you're able to go to this link, and it's a public website. You can look through it through the state Forest Service website. You can hone in on polygons, so they do aerial flights every year. Last year, the flights weren't as numerous, and they focused on higher priority or high priority areas just due to the COVID pandemic and limiting the risk of the pilots. So we have those results back. You can certainly see that the bug situation on the western part of the, the county is increasing. The bugs don't generally just disappear all at once, they get to a point where they've done what they're going to do before they, some event kills them out. So you can go in and look at that map and hone in on the polygons, and it'll tell you what sort of insect, what sort of mortality rate we're seeing, and where that ownership is. So it's very useful information if you have questions about particular pieces of ground.
What is the comparison of those forests in Los Angeles County versus the ones in San Juan and so on? Is the same mortality rate applicable to, pretty much?
Yes, the, so the western slip forests like the San Juan and the Rio Grande, the bugs have hit them first. So we're a few years behind them, so the situation that you see over there is what we will see here, you know, in a couple of years. You know, so the, the insect and disease situation has been highlighted with some of the large fires we've had lately. So back in 2013, I believe it was, over on the Rio Grande and the San Juan, they had some large fires. The western forest complex, you know, we had the ducker fire up at Salida, Fremont County, and I don't remember what year that was, probably 2016. So we are a few years behind that here, but we do, the beetles are coming over from Castilla County over into Los Angeles.
What is the research discovery on that particular beetle? Is there any deterrent that could be used?
So we employ as much as we can. We've done spraying in our campgrounds, and that has helped curb some of the presence of what we see in our campgrounds a little bit. It's not, you have to spray the trees individually, so it's not practical to do that in the entire forest. But we have seen some success with that, I wouldn't say a hundred percent, in spraying in the campgrounds. We, early on, when the beetles first started hitting up on the Greenhorn Mountain in Custer, Warfino County, we put trap trees in, which basically was, we would put a tree in distress to attract beetles to it, and when the beetles would infest it, we would haul it out. The thought was if you could catch it early and remove some of the beetles, you wouldn't have as many to infiltrate the rest of the forest. I think they were already there in force, and so that would definitely be very effective. We haven't found the magic cure yet.
Good hard trees.
Yeah, for a long time, and there you go, because, yeah, they, it would have to sustain multiple cycles of, of the bug's progression. You know, so, yeah, we see, you know, the spruce bud worm is also an issue that we're starting to see in those forests as well. Encourage you to take a look at that survey. You know, so because of that, I think a large risk to Los Angeles County as well, if you get those fuels that accumulate and build up and become just a tinderbox ready for the ignition.
So as you're seeing all this, is, would it be a waste of money and resources if reforestation begins as we're seeing so many of these vegetation disappear? I mean, and I know if you start reforested, is that going to be, the new growth is that going to be impacted with the same beetle? Or is that only impacting the grown, immature trees?
So I'm certainly not the entomologist, so I don't have all the answers on the bugs, but the way that it has been explained to me is the bugs like to attack the stressed trees, which generally are the ones that have been exposed to drought for long periods of time. The younger trees aren't nearly susceptible, and they don't really just provide that good of a food source for the bugs. They're looking for some of the mature trees that are stressed where they're going to be able to have an impact. Any other questions?
Back to the road.
Well, that is the next session here, section here, so, yeah, on roads. So there are a couple of Forest Service roads in Los Angeles County that historically have been covered under a Schedule A agreement, and that would be the portions of Cordoba Pass Road, as well as the Purgatory Road. That agreement has actually expired a number of years ago. And what I'd like to do is get that reenacted. Now, the county has certainly been following the maintenance schedule that was set out in that agreement, but we don't have the actual agreement mechanism in place. So I did provide a draft document, free will to review, and provides some input on. And once we have those comments back, we can start the process of getting that put into place. And that just formalizes the agreement that Los Angeles County will do the maintenance per the schedule and the maintenance plan that we work with your road and bridge department on to maintain those two roads. Like I said, y'all have still been doing it, we just want to formalize that agreement. The county does get money for doing that road maintenance through the federal highway taxes as part of the gasoline taxes. That's how the money comes back to the county through the state. So if that's agreeable, I would like to pursue getting that agreement.
So you're trying to talk to this guy here?
Yes, sir. Yeah, his name is on the agreement.
That one seems right around the corner.
And you need these guys to speak to.
Christine, I think we got some funding.
And we have these with the other counties, you know, it's a very standard agreement that the Forest Service has with counties, so.
The three of us up here are just small fish.
Yeah, our last one, you know, expired in, I think, nineteen ninety-four, and even the maintenance plan that we've all still been following expired in 2016, so we just need to get that reopened. We do have our lockable gates on Cordoba Pass Road on both Los Angeles and the Warfino side. Those generally are locked open year-round, of course, once the snow starts coming in, that road isn't passable. And we don't plow that road, that's not something that we're interested in doing. When we have tried that in the past, you all know how the wind blows up there, and so you plow it and it blows shut, and folks have gotten stuck up there, and it entails some search and rescue conditions, so. Folks can still access the area via snowmobile once the snow gets up there, so it's still accessible. It's just not a plow route. If there is a need to close those gates, that's on the county portion of the roads, and so folks will do that as needed.
I believe Metro Blue Ridge has a clear for access for these towers up there, like, well, mostly.
Not necessarily. We've gone in on snowmobiles or ATVs with the tracks.
And we just, we're just doing a agreement or a grant to, let me have that up, we're over.
We have, but back to your other comment, where there has been a time or two when we have gone and plowed to get a service vehicle up to see the red detentive. We submitted a grant to try to do some work on forty-six.
So, yeah, generally what we try to do is, you know, have that road open, Cordoba Pass around Memorial Day. It just depends on what the snow level is. Definitely is used quite a bit by folks during the summertime. That one will rattle your kidneys, too.
I know.
It's, yeah, there's not a lot that can be done with that road, just because it's down to better rock and soft places, but.
Yeah, and on a different topics, on forest land, I, I travel, I traverse these roads quite often, as you can tell. We, I do experience a lot of folks up in those areas hunting for mushroom, wild mushroom berries and such. Is that allowable on this Forest Service land, or is that something that the Forest Service does not look?
No, it is allowable in certain quantities, so like with mushrooms, I believe that you can have, gosh, I don't have a right in front of me, so I may say this wrong, but I want to say it's like five, five-gallon buckets of mushrooms that you can have per household in a year. If you want to get more than that, then you have to get a permit from us. And that's for personal consumption, so it's not for folks to go out and sell them. So, yeah, but, so, yes, for personal consumption in limited quantities, you can certainly do that on the forest.
Glad to ask, because we're going, my wife bought the book. Commissioner John Delusha, Warford County's an avid mushroom hunter, I see him quite often up there.
Well, all to say, if you go up on the Greenhorn, that is the hotspot for mushrooms, so. Yeah, any questions on roads? That's really what we're looking at.
If you may, please. Am I interpreting this correctly, that the sheets that are titled annual road maintenance plan, is that a new plan versus what the old plan is?
It's what we would like the new plans to be, but it does not vary from the old plan. It's just a different format, and we're trying to be a little bit more specific on the expectations, because there's been some confusion sometimes of who's doing what. So we're just trying to be very specific about what the Forest Service will provide as part of that and what we're asking the county to do, so it should be based on the original maintenance plan.
What kind of budget?
Okay, boy, put it in themselves.
What kind of budget are we doing?
Dollar I think?
Yeah, like per mile?
About eighteen hundred dollars a mile, and I think there's probably two and a half, maybe a little more than that.
Yeah, there's, it's on.
Well, I need to count, I think, forty-six, which is another three miles, I think, on the Purgatory side.
Yeah, oh, let's see, there's.
Sixish miles, I think it is. Twenty-two.
There's about nine miles between, yeah, because we also have you guys do the campground, oops, up in the Purgatory Campground, so it's right about nine miles.
Okay, back to the, back to the agreement, Stan. What we would be looking at is what I'm determining as the new agreement, because if I, if I'm looking at the old agreement correctly, it's showing that we need to clean the culverts twice per year. It's showing that we need to clean, reshape, shake the ditches, I don't think, three times a year. But your, the newer plan, what I call the newer plan, makes a whole lot more sense, where it's as needed and ditch maintenance is one time for every three years or whatever. Because we start bringing up a bunch of rock, especially if we get the gravel from the ground, start bringing a bunch of rock, the ditch cleaning, ditches every year, or excuse me, three times a year, that just didn't make sense, so.
Yeah, we've tried to, you know, and we can negotiate that if that still doesn't make sense. But, you know, we, that's where some of the confusion came from in the past, you know, with some of our other agreements. It's folks were like, you know, it's not making sense for us to go and do some of this stuff three times a year, because we don't have the material, or, or it's just not effective. And so we try to make this a little bit more realistic and meaningful. So if you see something in there that, that makes sense, that's great. And if you see something that doesn't make sense, we can certainly talk to the engineers and get that adjusted.
Okay, okay.
And when those roads are in need of repair, it does help keep the traffic speed slow, so they don't tend to.
People don't like to drive fast on a road, or, well, they do, but it's not safe.
We don't have to utilize our sheriff's office as, as much on keeping an eye on those retro activities. But again, it would, you know, behoove the county to keep those maintains, you know, and help, because the, the community that live in here is such highly anticipated as a resort or, you know, hiking and biking and camping location now. And now that Bishop Peak State Park is here, it's just going to amplify our region, so.
Yeah, and every day I'm seeing more and more stuff online about this area and the recreational opportunities that are here and the tourist attractions, which, you know, Highway Legends in Cordoba Pass is a, I forget the designation, but some sort of designated federal scenic highway. And so, you know, and there are a lot of neat features up there in the wilderness. You hike up to the peaks, Bishop Pot Arch, I mean, there's a lot of really neat features. So I expect those places will start to get more travel, and certainly the benefit of the county is, you know, those recreational haulers we can spend here.
Any other questions?
So the one developed campground we have in the county is the Purgatory Campground that we mentioned. The Forest Service has a concessionary that operates that, and we work closely with them. Pretty popular with hunters and with weep people, just to run and fall. So we do continue to make improvements to that campground with regular maintenance. It's definitely a campground that's more tucked away, and so it's not as popular as some of our others, but I think that's what gives us its.
It's a nice little secret.
Yes, it is.
Question on it, I don't, I haven't looked at it and driven down to the bottom. At one time, there used to be a water source up there, a well that ran continuously year-round. Is that still active?
I don't believe that we have operating well at that campground for water source. There, I think there are some hand pumps for the campers to be able to have water there. So I don't know if that is from a spring or from a well. I think it's from a well.
Yeah, there used to be a spring.
There might be a spring, yeah.
It's been years since I've gone, gone to that actual part of the campground. Down on the thirty-four A of the, on that bottom loop, there used to be, I think it was plenty of places, way back in prior forties or fifties.
Now everybody knows your secret.
And it was a fresh water spring, I believe, that, no matter what, complicated.
There may be a spring box there, I'm not sure. I don't think, yeah, I don't think that that's what we use as the source of water for the campgrounds. We do have those in some other ones, but I don't think that we do there. But the old spring box may still be there, I'm not certain.
Are those potable or disposable?
Um, we don't treat it, and so it's, we, we don't consider.
No comment?
We don't consider a public water source, because in their state rules, we have to follow, so. If you decide to dip the water bottle in there, you might treat it, so you don't pick up some geothermal. That'd be my thought. But, yeah, that's what I had for, you know, Forest Service updates. I do want to connect with the sheriff on, talking about initiating a search and rescue agreement with the Forest Service. And it's certainly not, the sheriff has jurisdiction over search and rescue, and we don't get involved in that. But it's a matter of notification when that happens on federal land. And also when those operations happen in the wilderness, you know, we have laws that we have to follow about motorized and mechanized equipment in wilderness, so there's a checklist that we want to run through. And we don't pull that up and say, oh, wait, you have to talk to us before you do this. It's, you know, the sheriff running through a checklist and saying, yeah, we meet this, this is a life emergency, we can go ahead and do this, and then the notification to the Forest Service. So we do have those with our other counties. We don't have one with Los Angeles, and I would like to get one put in. We don't have one with Colosseum, and I would like to get one put in place, and that would cover us as well as Lonchox Unit down by Pico Air.
So, and, I'm curious, with the Forest Service and with DPW, do you guys work together? And, like, if we sign this contract, does that, would that include some of these state parks, or?
No, so, Colorado Forest Wildlife as a state agency, they might have a separate agreement. And so we have agreements with CPW for certain things that are happening on Forest Service land, but operations on state parks, we don't, the Forest Service doesn't get involved in.
Okay.
John, anything to add?
Oh, I'd just like to, again, thank you for the humbling opportunity to serve the folks up in Los Angeles County, as well as our greater user groups. I appreciate the opportunity to be here and meet everybody in this room, really for the first time in the county.
Hey, John, for, for our public sake, with our reporters here today, can you give them a description of your, the Comanche National Grasslands area, and what county is it in?
Sure, the Comanche Grassland covers approximately five hundred thousand acres of southern Colorado. We work with, with, with Los Angeles, Otero, and Laca Counties for a large part. I have also had the great fortune to help out on the Kansas side of our grassland complex up on the Simron side. We work with a number of other counties over on the Simron side of the border. Traditionally, the Comanche has served a lot of our agricultural industries, and we're really proud that we're able to host those partners on our landscape. Typical year, depending on precipitation, we might have, you know, ten thousand cow calf pairs that graze on the Comanche National Grassland. We also have, you know, a lot of oil and gas in the southern portion of the Comanche National Grassland. We have the largest dinosaur trip site in North America, and we like to boast that we have, especially with our, with our mountain partners, that we had the largest big horn sheep herder in Colorado out on, on the grassland. So, we're, we're really proud of that, too. So, I'll give you a quick rundown on the Comanche. I can certainly answer any questions you might have about the Comanches.
One of the, a couple of years ago, we had a, a group of farmers and ranchers, you know, certainly looking for the leasing of these grasslands for grazing and so on, and, I'm sure you have all that information on your website. You know, you would be just putting out their information for the public. You know, quite honestly, at that time, I did know how to respond to the question. It's like, well, let me see what we can do, let me refer you to the right and proper perspective. What is the process for someone that is interested in either hunting, accessing, and/or simply leasing a portion of those grasslands?
Sure, we get, a lot of folks were very interested in the recruiting process, and we have a somewhat different process on the grassland than in some of the other forested areas, in that we work with grazing associations. So we have four grazing associations on this side of the border, and those associations are run by members, and they're determined, for the most part, where folks graze and working with us, the amount of grazing opportunities each of us has. So, those are self-contained bodies. If we work with it, or made up of members of our county populace, and they work really, really great, so that way John doesn't have to have, you know, six hundred permits, he's working just with me, and I can work with those four user groups. Works really wonderful, great communication with us, and that system is really working well on your national grassland. And if anybody has it, they can call John directly. I'll leave my car here, you wanna leave, and if people have a question, you just say, call John, and he'll look at what the right grading is. If that's fair to you, we can do that easy.
And those associations are primarily core, or the Comanche correct?
Actually, if you look at the history of our grassland complexes, most of southern Colorado and Kansas were formed, obviously, after the Dust Bowl, when folks couldn't make any more, they would sell their properties back to the US government, and those later became what today's known as our grassland complexes. And the Comanches especially is really checkboard, and so we'll have, you know, a section of privately owned land, section of the Comanche owned, section after section after section across hundreds of miles. So, instead of the big contiguous properties that we have perhaps in our mountains, ours are really shared properties with our communities, and that's the way our program works. So, we have landowners dispersed throughout the grassland interior and exterior, and we, I really am also proud, like, you know, almost every available piece of ground that we have on the Comanche National Grassland, we have permitted for cattle of some sort, so that, one, we can, we can, we can reduce the fuel loads, which is a great service that our producers provide to us, and, two, you know, we're helping feed America. It's a great program and symbiotic relationship, so it works out well for everybody.
So those grazing operations that are on those, do you guys manage that? Do you tell them, you can come in first to main, because of the lack of participation, you have precipitation, you be out?
Well, we, we like to, we work with, with the community. You know, our grazing association members, they know the land even better than we do. We have a lot of great PhD scientists, soil scientists, and folks who study all the grasses. They are wonderful people, but they haven't lived on the land as long as some of our property owners. And usually, our property owners are, are often more conservative than the federal government. So we'd like to consider the partnership, how's that? If there's a time when, when we think that we're overstressing the resource, we'll work with the associations, and as an association as a whole, we'll make the decisions, whether they come off early or not graze in that year. Again, if you look into the history on the permit system, the idea is that a landlord can have cattle on their property in the wintertime, and if they have that opportunity to expand, you know, in the summer months. Again, we have all kinds of permits, some year-round and some just in the summertime, but for the most part, that was the original design, was to offer that opportunity to expand, you know, the acres of grazing that some of our range partners have.
Many of those operators out there have been there for, you know, decades, and the school of hard knocks that taught them to, you know, the way to graze that.
Yeah, they're, they're great talkers, and, you know, we all want to make sure that we're managing the resource for our children, and their children, and they're just tremendous partners in allowing us to meet those goals.
And how do the hunting opportunities happen? If the hunting opportunities on those, on those grounds, so the leasees, do they control the hunting aspect of it, or do you?
That's another, that's another question. And again, leasing has a different set of, a different rule set than a permit, so none of our landowners have a lease on the national forest. Now, there are a lot of leases distributed through the national forest, where we have the same landowners that have a lease with the state of Colorado, which is a little bit of a different system. So, so all those cattle are permitted on the Forest Service property, but the landowners do not have what we probably considered lease rights, and that is, you know, a little, a little bit of how we package, so, but, yes, so, to that end, all of our taxpayer public, all the members of the, of the Los Angeles community as well, have the opportunity to recreate on any of our Forest Service lands, and we don't prohibit that opportunity very often unless we have an exposure rule.
Thank you.
So, did that help on the hunting? Did it answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Following up with that, John and Destiny, I recently traveled up north to Colorado Springs this weekend, and all along the twenty-five corridor, the refuse, the trash, the despair along the rivers, the creeks, the highways and byways is appalling. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the US Forest Service for the parks that you manage here, the territories you manage in Los Angeles County, is immaculate. I traverse these areas, especially up on Highway twelve, quite often, and wherever you're, is in charge of keeping those areas clean, is doing a great job for the US Forest Service and for our community, so thank you for that. Please pass that on to your superior and to your staff that is assisting in keeping those, those areas beautiful, so thank you very much.
And thank you for that, and I'll just say, you know, our employees, they are out there, and they do as much as they can. We cover a lot of ground, we camped everywhere, and really, the public has been helpful in doing their part when they see something, picking it up. Unfortunately, we do have some of the issues that you see in the more urban areas with folks that may not have the outdoor epic and maybe don't pick up after themselves so well, and we are seeing, you know, some issues with homelessness on the forest as well, and sometimes those camps aren't kept very clean. But we have a lot of folks who are very vested in their public lands, and when they're out there recreating and they see something, they're helping us with that, too, so it certainly is not something we're doing all on our own.
If time is not an issue, I can, I can get off the stage and go, I can give you a couple of updates for the Comanche that you would like to visit.
Please.
Probably, Destiny, talk about roads. We do not have an organic roads group on the Comanche National Grassland, so we rely on some of our other forces to come help us. So we got some help coming in, well, mid-March, we believe, from the Gunnisons, and they'll bring their team down, who does roads, and give us about two weeks of road help on the, on our roadways that are on the Comanche. So if there's, there's anything that's glaring, that you need some help, just give me a shout, and we can get them on it. It's, it's a short-term period, but we really appreciate the help that we get from, from the folks who have the opportunity. They're a little bit under snow now, so they can run all their equipment out here and help us a couple of weeks, so we're really, really super happy that they can come help us for a while. So that'll, that'll allow us to improve some of the roadways that are a little rough. Probably the other one that affects this group the most will be our prescribed fire program. We, our annual rated prescribed fire on the Comanche is, and the Simron together, is about five thousand acres of burning. We plan to do similar this year, obviously, depending on Mother Nature and what the moisture does for us this year. Of those burns, I think there's one in Los Angeles County, it's a three hundred acre burn in Cincinnati allotment, which is just to the west of Kim, Colorado. So that one three hundred acre burn is within the confines of Los Angeles County, and we look forward to it. It's a, it's a great opportunity to put fire on the landscape. I'm not the fire scientist, but I know Mother Nature likes to have fire once in a while on the ground, and it'll, it usually improves the forage for our cattle, with those orbs that blow fire, you know, probably twenty percent, helps our wildlife, helps our, our, a couple of rare bird species on the landscape, and we're really proud of the opportunity to introduce fire on the grassland and help protect the members of our communities.
John, when you do that, you certainly invite the local fire protection district to.
Certainly not.
Yes.
Now, I said that another happened, your, your fire department in Kim, Colorado, is integral to all our operations, they're out on the ground with us every day, providing water tenders, and if we were to have an escape, which is always a possibility whenever you're doing something while, they are there to help us in the event of an escape. So what a tremendous working relationship with your team. I really can't tell you how much that they're a part of our team, and we couldn't do our job on the landscape without your fire department helping us. They really do a great job.
When the protected date occurred? When is the protected date to get through?
Well, we'll have to see if we get into what we call the correct, well, we need a couple of things to line up, sorry. First is to, we'll bring in a team, again, that the mountains can support us, that they're not under fire problems at that time. We'll ask our fire teams to come out and help us, so we have a large enough fire team to make sure that we can control what we're doing on the ground. We're gonna make sure we do it right, and then, and if we have an escape, to work that down. So we'll get those folks on the ground, and then once that lines up, we, we'll have to get into what they call a proper prescription, which just means we have to make sure our relative communities are good and our soil conditions are right, and our winds aren't too high. There's a formula, you put it on a big conchelator, and out pops, you know, a go or no go, and it's, it actually is a tremendously scientific principle of operation, and we pay really good attention, because, you know, we, we want to make sure we manage it by our best possible means. So that's kind of how it has to line up. So, there's dates right now, and then we also have to work with the National Environmental Policy Act, and it will prohibit us from burning after the fifteenth of April. So our probably, the primary time for our burn window, March fifteenth to the first weekend of April, how that normally lines up, and we, on the Colorado side of the grassland complex, we, we don't engage usually in fall burning, but we do on the Kansas portion, if that's helpful.
One last question, if I made sure, you mentioned the high population of the ranch in the area, and I'm sure you and I will belong with it, but my question is, what's our population of lion and public activity interaction, if it occurs out there whatsoever?
You know, I had a funny instance, just last year, I was out getting ready for a fire, and, and assassins, and there was a hunter, he came running to me, he says, you know, he had just, he was signing an envelope with his bow, and he had seen a lion, and he was scared him pretty good, so he didn't know whether he was hunting or the lion or something, but he was ready to get back in his truck. Again, the state serves normally as our host of our wildlife population. We do have an excellent grassland biologist named Christie Painter, you know, lions are awesome in the landscape throughout the grassland. We haven't had a lot of, to my knowledge, human lion interactions that turn negative in any instance, but, but we certainly have them, and probably the ones who have the best data on, they are partners, they call our parks and wildlife, who work on the landscape with us every day. They, they have been another just tremendous partner. We have some places where we can provide plantings for a number of wildlife species, and Colorado Parks and Wildlife has a recent grant, and in those exposure areas that we have on the grassland that are NIPA approved, they're working with us to provide food sources for a number of our wildlife populations. They've been just a super partner on the landscape, and I can't thank them enough. We can't do it without their help and their grant money and their support, so they're another great member of the team that supports this community.
Sure.
CPW has been doing some lion studies up in Puster and Werfenow. We've got some technicians that are staying at our bunkhouse up there, calling lions and being able to get some of the population counts, and I don't know if they're doing a similar study on the grassland, but I would anticipate at some point they probably would expand that, but a lot of that study's happening in the mountains. I know they're seeing a lot of lions this year, that's all I know, but there's a lot.
They projected, last night, DPW had an online virtual meeting, an update on lions, and they projected there's four thousand in southern Colorado that they've actually seen, so that's a lot of lions.
It's a healthy population.
Yeah. Well, you know, it's good to hear that we have lions and tigers and bears. So I wanted, you know, behalf of Los Angeles County and Port County Commissioners, thank you so much for reaching out to us, and feel free to continue the communications, chat with Mr. Don Camp, and certainly we'll be returning, we'll take you through the document, and we will have a response back to you. John, thank you so much for that insight, and five hundred, I mean, those five hundred thousand acres are just incredible, grassland for the recreation of color elephants, and sometimes our communities don't know that we have access to that, so we really appreciate. So, we really appreciate you giving us that information.
Thank you for your time. If you guys have questions at all at any point, please reach out to John. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
So, John, when I hear a phone call, I'm just going to be referring to you. What is it? That sounds good. I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. And, okay. Let's go to now at this time, item 7, 78, finished business. Consideration of Southern Colorado Economic Development District Membership Fee. Mr. Don Camp, the commissioners.
Commissioner, before you move, is your consideration, Southern Colorado Economic Development District Membership Fee, the board had tabled this at your last meeting?
Chairman, I may, please. As a member of SCED, a board member, non-voting board member of SCED, and I'd say that on purpose, because the last time, prior, when we were asked to consider holding back some of the ARC funds that was discussed at that time. And it was just that easy for Mr. Bollman to say, if you pay us, you can be a voting member. And I had a lot of heartburn with SCED and his comments at that time. But also at that time, the discussion was on the, the amount was thought to be $500. The way it was brought before us, it changed. And I reviewed this thoroughly and I've gone over and over and over again, the consideration, the product that SCED would bring to Los Angeles County. And they call it a product because it's a source of what we have. I think we would be duplicating services rendered that we already have afforded to this board from other entities in the community. And at this time, I know some other communities have done very well with SCED. And in fact, Danielle Lurbe, Otero Park, mentioned that they are really assisting very well in the housing community in Otero County. However, Otero County does not have, let's say Lahana, does not have the economic development employee pool that we have here in the city of Trinidad. So, again, they are servicing a community that doesn't have an entity that focuses on that. For Los Angeles County and the city of Trinidad, we have that opportunity here that's already being fulfilled with salary employment for the city of Trinidad. The other broadband issue, I think we've addressed that with DOLA and the opportunity for us to reach out for our own assistance with Department of Local Affairs. So, I would, in my opinion, think at this time, for this year, I would, I would probably consider just remain the status quo of not paying the membership fee at this time and still being a board member of a non-voting stature. Is that a motion? Yes.
I'll second the motion. Commissioner Haslam?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Solzner?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yeah, I believe that's a very good recommendation. And thank you, Commissioner Lotis. Now, before we go into the next item, I was remiss, forgetting to, last week, Colorado Commerce Incorporated Commissioner Tony Haas was recognized by Logan County Commissioner Byron Pelton. And one of the things that I, I think from time to time, humility is great, but we also have to shout just a little bit. And so, in this particular time, Commissioner Tony Haas, and I believe you're significant other, for the most important part of a partnership, they were recognized with the Trailblazer Award, Who's Who Among People in the Ag. And the humble comments by Commissioner Pelton, where Tony has been a defender of the ag community. Tony has been the voice for rural Colorado. And Tony has been one that basically has shouted from the rooftops, "The beef is what we eat in Colorado." So, that is important and incredible. So, from that, I'm just, I just wanted to put that out there. And an honor to work with you, Commissioner Haas, and congratulations on the recognition. And perhaps you can get together with our media and do a press release.
Thank you so much. And the recognition, I really want to thank the Denver Business Journal and the Colorado Farm Bureau for the process. Forty-two applicants were there. And to come out, the victors of the speak over those individuals and just what an honor. It's an outstanding experience.
There's a nice photo of you two as well.
Yeah.
Ben, I'll forward it to you.
Congratulations, Commissioner Haas.
Congratulations.
So, now we'll go to section eight, 8A. Consideration of IFB 22 dash C 005 Courthouse Sidewalk Retaining Wall.
Commissioners, before you move, is your consideration is our IFB 22-C 005 Courthouse Retaining, Courthouse Sidewalk Retaining Wall. We bid this a few meetings back and we had no response. We bid it again and we got one response from EGD Construction. The basic bid price was 329,000, $133. The base bid would replace the retaining wall from the east entrance steps to the courthouse to the west, along First Street, back up to the west side entrance steps. And then, option A would be from the south side of the west entrance steps to the alley. We had budgeted 270,000 for this project. So, my recommendation would be not to consider option A, but to consider the base bid, 329,130. I spoke with our finance director, Christie Coburn, and she says she could come up with the balance. Otherwise, we're going to have to not do approximately 67 feet of that piece that I'm just describing along First Street and back up to the two steps.
Avoiding the hodgepodge.
I agree.
Is the, that contractor local?
Yes.
Okay, very good. And as far as the, one of the initial conversations, and I know, I just want to put it out there for the public, the sidewalk was going to go from its current width to a reduced width, but I believe it's going to remain the same.
The city of Trinidad, my understanding, the city of Trinidad will be perhaps replacing. It's been under bids and schedules and funding and everything else. Because we are looking at replacing that sidewalk sometime this summer or next fall. So, my understanding is the sidewalk width will remain the same or approximately the same. And that's why we'd like to get a retaining wall done first so they can butt their sidewalk right up again, our new retaining wall, rather than doing it vice versa.
And so, one more question on the retaining wall. That is going to be to the same contour and architectural design that we currently have up there?
As close as possible, Commissioner. I understand that. I'm not sure how that wall was put in, when it was put in, but there was a lot of labor work.
Yeah. And I think this contractor even says that they're going to be putting back a coat of Cuban, which I think will give it the aesthetic that we need to, to display what we currently have up there. Cuban usually tends to peel off in time. Just a little footnote from my perspective, having a family member that does this, I don't, but he does. And he was actually, I had him read some of the, he says, be careful with that. And you just have the contractor guarantee that in fact, it's going to last for Colorado.
So, you're talking macedic?
Yeah, something, an applicator that would remain there. Because, you know, Cuban tends to separate and fluctuate within hot and cold. And I'm not a concrete expert by all means, but certainly I know as we work through the project, you'll be...
Well, that was an addition that they put into the project that wasn't specified.
Okay.
But when they discussed it with me, I thought, yeah, put it in as part of the project as an add-on, in essence. Because to get that same look that we have on all the other walls, rather than just concrete itself, they offered to do that. But I will talk with them about what kind of warranty or guarantees.
Option A, the remainder of the project would be completed when?
We're looking at trying to maybe get that budgeted next year. I spoke with finance director Coburn. That's what she suggests, which makes sense, doesn't it? Now, we've got some ideas on millennial footage cost, but I think I figured around 650, I don't remember what the number was. And this bid came in, I think, right at 800 and I would say 65 dollars a millennial foot to remove and replace. There's a lot of speculation. It's backed on, that's underneath. And we don't know if there's footers going every which direction. One source here in the community said yes, but I'm not sure. We don't know what we've got underneath there. So, now we will...
And with the specifications, they also have taken a look at the footer that's going to go on there for the whole thing. So, thank you. And thank you, Director Coburn, for breaking the piggyback. You know, sometimes it's imperative that we finish this project.
I should say no.
Yeah, you should say no.
There was a possibility when they excavate the old wall out of there that they'll damage the sidewalk that's there anyway, because it's probably over laid on the footer, right?
We're not sure if the footer extends underneath the sidewalk. But if so, part of the bid was to go ahead and cut that sidewalk where it need be in order to get that out and in.
So, it's not...
So, we're not trying to...
Why? And vice versa, when the city goes to replace that sidewalk, they get damaged retaining wall. So, they have to be very careful how they move forward with that.
And it has to be cut. So, when the removal of the wall and its foundation, if you have a continuous cut in there, then we know that you're separating the two structures.
Good point. We did one build together, guys, and we're general contractors now. It's still... Kaboom.
We got each back coming up some videos with that.
Yes.
Well, I'm glad we all look at every aspect of the county so with this much insight and intention. And really appreciate the board for every aspect that we look at, even to our cosmetics and our building here. So, thank you all. And thank you for looking into it. Your family member to have a viewpoint on this.
Yeah, I see that concrete board leaders, so, yeah. Very good. So, any more discussion on that?
I would entertain the motion to approve IFB 22-C 005 Courthouse Retaining Wall as presented.
Second motion. Commissioner Haslam?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Solzner?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yes.
That'd be your best?
That'd be the base bid excluding option A.
329,900?
Yes.
338,300?
No, depending more, right, Christie?
Correct.
Now, IFB, consideration of IFB 22 dash C 003 White County Health Department Parking Lot Asphalt Overlay. Mr. Don Camp?
Commissioner, before you move, your consideration is IFB 22 dash C 003. In essence, an overlay over the Health Department Parking Lot. The following results, Walsworth Sand and Gravel, 41,062.50 payment minus services, 41,150. I'd ask the board to approve Walsworth Sand and Gravel's bid, 41,062.50. It's a pretty tight bid. I think the difference is 87.50 between those two bids. So, we've got decent bids. And we had 45,000 budget for this one. So, this one actually came under. Not like the other two.
Have any comments from the board, any questions?
I'm just finding it here. I know it was attached separately.
Oh, excuse me, Commissioner. Yes, it should be on page 148, either thereabouts. Up to the upper part of your PDF, they'll show page slash in it.
And just one comment on the two contractors, Walsworth Sand and Gravel, he's in on the region. I believe the other organization was out of, Salida?
I believe so.
And they were part of that Santa Fe Trail project last summer here, which had a lot of issues. So, with saying that, I would make the motion to approve IFB 22-C 003 to Walsworth Sand and Gravel, 41,062.56 cents.
50 cents, sir. Second motion. Commissioner Haslam?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Solzner?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yes. Item 8C, consideration of IFB 22 dash C 004 Linden Avenue, County Road 71.1 Sidewalk and Rams. Mr. Don Camp?
Commissioners, we were fortunate enough to receive a grant back up. For your consideration, for your consideration is IFB 22 dash C 004, placing the sidewalk on the west side of Linden Avenue, County Road 71.1, and then from the fairgrounds entrance gates back to the north to the end of the fairgrounds on the east side of Linden Avenue, 71.1. We were fortunate enough to receive a CDOT Main Street grant for, I think it was 150,000 dollars for this project. And I had budgeted 150 in cash. It came in a bit over budget, I think about 10,000 over budget. So, this is a little bridge project. We have money with the Little Bridge Fund to go ahead and cover that additional cost rather than stopping 20 feet short of not completing the project. I would recommend to the board to go ahead and approve the bid from Cedar Ridge Landscape. The base bid is 8,338. Option A, which is the east side of Linden Avenue, from the entrance, fairgrounds entrance to the north end of the fairgrounds, 67,360. Western Civil, 144, base bid is 140,146.96. Option A was 44,182.7 cents. EGD Construction, their base bid is 120,360. Option A was 67,500. I'd ask the board to award this project to Cedar Ridge Landscaping with a 5% reference points for our local vendors. They still do not come to the bid of Cedar Ridge. So, I'd ask the board to approve Cedar Ridge's bid. More base bidding option A.
Okay, thank you. The, on some of the drawings that was needed here, in one of the sections, the storm drain apparently was not quite in the proper location. And I know that includes all of it. One of the, one of the comments in here also. And I actually drove by there yesterday, walked around through the proposed sidewalk. And in one of the sections, I'll be looking at the private property owner, the one that has a used refuse, yard there with vehicles in there. Is that going to be wide enough, working with these private property landowners, to put the sidewalk in there? Because that's going to be about a right upward, the fencing that it has in there. And then, the storm drainage that we have in there on the very same location, is it going to have to be moved out just a bit?
If we're talking here by Clark, where it goes back into the city's development, I can't recall the top name of what that development is, where those two...
Right across, yes.
The two storm drains are. They're actually culvert storm drains. No, actually are right away through there. But it goes actually all the way back up to where the fence lines are. So, people parking, I think I don't know the location, talking about parking next to the curb. They're actually parking on the county's driveway. So, we'll ask them to move those vehicles, get the sidewalk placed in there. And then, if they want to park on, they try to keep from parking on the sidewalk. As far as those two culvert storm drains, on the one on the north side of Clark there, then there's going to be some extra concrete you have to put in there. Because I think right now ADA only allows about a 2% grade on the sidewalk, either a plus or minus 2% grade. So, in order to achieve that, that concrete's going to have to be fairly thick through there on the north side of Clark there. on the north side of Clark there.
Okay.
And the contractors are aware of that, we spoke about that.
Did you do a walkthrough with him?
I did do a walkthrough with this contractor and with EDG.
Okay.
For EGD.
Very good. Any other questions, comments?
Commissioner, there was a hundred and forty thousand dollar, excuse me, a hundred and forty thousand dollar grant. Main Street's grant, so it's ten thousand, six hundred and eight dollars in difference, because we can get that in a road bridge out of a road bridge.
This is gonna be such a great improvement to the power. I mean, and with all the projects that we plan on doing at the county fairgrounds, people can actually feel safe not having to walk on the street. In some sectors, that will have the passageway in a safe manner, so I think that's a great, great project. When are they planning to start this?
I didn't give a timeline, but they called me Friday, I believe it was, asking if the decision had been made on the bid, and I told them that the board would be considered today, so I'm gonna guess about when we start fairness, I'm guessing.
Very good. Well, let's get it started, I'll move for approval of IFB twenty-two C zero zero four Linden Avenue, County Road seventy-one point one, sidewalk and ramps to Cedar Ridge Landscape.
And that's basically it, and option eight?
Please.
Second.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yes. Item eight B, consideration of Perry Stokes Airport Taxiway Improvement Grant.
Commissioner, before you, for your consideration is our Perry Stokes Taxiway Improvement Grant application. Finance Director Cobra Lee, please chime in if I miss anything. This is typical grant application that we've submitted before for other projects, Perry Stokes seeking funds from the FAA.
It's part of our capital improvement from F A A.
Part of our capital improvement, and on page one sixty-two or thereabouts, lists the estimated funding, federal FAA funding will be a hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. State five percent match is seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars. Our match is seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars for total project estimated cost of one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars.
This is the annual grant that we either request or allow airports to go after or reach.
We receive money every year from them, some years we push it off to the following year, that capital improvement plan I bring every year, I can remember. That's what this is.
Well, perfect timing now that we need all these improvements. Having said that, I will make a motion to approve the application for the Perry Stokes Taxiway Improvement Grant.
Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yes.
Item eight E, consideration of Resolution twenty-two dash zero one four John Jenkins, appointed to the E nine-one-one Board of Directors. Mr. Dornikat, would you read the resolution please?
Resolution Los Angeles County Board of County Commission, Los Angeles County Colorado, making appointment to the Los Angeles County E nine-one-one Authority Board of Directors, Resolution number twenty-two dash zero fourteen. Whereas, Los Angeles County Emergency nine-one-one, E nine-one-one Enterprise Authority Board has been informed for the purpose of providing policy guidance and directions for operations of emergency two-way radio dispatching of emergency service provided within Los Angeles County City of Trinidad, including law enforcement, fire response, and emergency medical services. And whereas, an agency exists on the Board of Directors for the remainder of the term previously filled by Dave Bachrack, who was approved by the Los Angeles County Board of County Commissioners, whereas recommendations of appointment have been received from rural fire districts operating within the county, and therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commission, Los Angeles County Colorado, that want. The Board of County Commissioners sets the nomination by the Trinidad Ambulance District, and hereby appoint John Jenkins to fill the remaining term of Dave Bachrack on the Los Angeles County E nine-one-one Authority Board of Directors from the date of this appointment until January thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Our motion is made, the second and affirmative, both those resolutions got the disapproval date of March twenty twenty-two by order of Board of County Commission, Los Angeles County Colorado, followed by your signature.
Any discussion, otherwise, may get a motion.
Move for approval of Resolution twenty-two dash zero one four John Jenkins, the E nine-one-one Board of Directors.
Second.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yes. Item eight F, consideration of the Federal Aviation Administration's Weathers Camera for Perry Stokes Airport Memorandum of Understanding. Mr. Dornikat?
Commissioner, before you, for your consideration, Memorandum of Understanding for the installation of aviation weather camera at our Perry Stokes Airport. It's probably been a year ago that Cedar Aeronautics approached us about possibly putting a camera out there. At the time, we had discussion, I didn't think there was any resistance to that, matter of fact, it may even help with flights that in and out of our Perry Stokes Airport, because they will be able to fly and see what kind of weather conditions are on our runways and taxiways and terminal, so I'd ask the board to approve this Memorandum of Understanding. What the county's obligated to do isn't a whole lot, we provide low cost conditions, simple mounting locations for the camera, which is a tower. I would call it on the northwest corner of the terminal, and we're looking to put the camera on if that doesn't soon see on aeronautics, there are parapoles in the city also that they can use.
And there's plenty of capacity on that tower.
Pardon me?
There's plenty of capacity on that tower.
Or that type of camera, yes.
Thank you.
And then four, three other bullets that don't amount to a whole lot in my opinion, so.
Yes, since we're there for trouble shooting camera out, it just are issues, that was one of the things, so I think that. And in the last bullet that I was gonna just make a question on, should replacing parts or equipment to the airport at the division's expense, and would we be the responsible parties to put those parts in?
Yes. To our capacity.
Okay.
If it's something that's well above capacity, I'll contact CDOT Aeronautics and just tell them we can't do that.
Very good, very good.
Counselor, do you have any issues with this MOU?
I do not.
Having said that, I'll make the motion to approve the MOU with the Federal Aviation Administration Weather Camera for Perry Stokes Airport.
Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yes. Item eight G, consideration of Energy Impact Assistance Fund Grant Application, Mr. Dornikat?
Commissioner, before you, for your consideration is the consideration of the Energy Impact Assistance Fund Grant Application, County Road thirteen point, segment of County Road thirteen point zero south. I wanna call it Torres Hill area, the Torres Hill Hill area. I'm gonna try and pave that stretch through the, the road continues to washboard, become unstable, cause potential traffic issues there. It's a grade, so there's a hill with a switchback and an escrow all in one location. It's about three quarters of a mile, and we're looking to try to get paid. We request a hundred and sixty thousand from Energy Impact with matching grant funds of a hundred and fifty thousand, and that is budgeted within our road bridge apartment. And we'll have ten thousand dollars worth of income for a hundred and sixty thousand dollar total county matching, just was called. So I'd ask the board to approve this Energy Impact Application.
Any questions, any comments from the board?
Just one comment, I think Commissioner Dornikat clarified in an email, but a couple of question marks or commas or something in that. Did that need to be changed or not? Or did the computer, what was?
It's actually a formatting error on the Energy Impact Assistance Grants side. I contacted Terry Marshall, Andy, Steve, and Dola, and Randy's email back to me was, thank you. This will help me keep pushing to get these changes made, apparently she's brought to their attention in the past, and those changes that they make. Because I know, Commissioner, you brought it to my attention over a year ago on one of our applications, that there was a comma in the zip code. I have no control on that, along with the question marks in the phone numbers, so.
Although, by new, Commissioner, I just didn't want us to get rejected for grammatical errors.
Really great point, you know, sometimes when you get into the weeds, you can see what's down there, so that's, thank you for that observation.
I have one comment to make, I know that Phil's gonna have a crunch time, because this grant is actually due at midnight tonight, so.
Yes, sir.
He's gonna be.
So let's not table it, please.
All right. I'll move to approve the Energy Impact Assistance Fund Grant Application.
Second.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yes. And thank you for bringing the midnight order to set that in, that's pretty good. Item eight H, consideration of OBCC number sixty-nine eighty-two to All Title Services Inc. for nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. I don't think this is coming from the, this comes from the record or recorder, it's probably
option one.
Standard, the document is attached.
Yes, Commissioner, so apparently for more payment on our title and restrictions.
Any discussion, any comments?
One question, I know financial Officer Christine Cobra Lee assists with some of their deposits, so we've been seeing a lot more of these recently than we have in recent years come forward before the board for these types of refunds. Have you also noticed some discrepancies, Miss Cobra Lee, regarding these, or? And what I'm getting at is, is this possibly part of the issue that that office had a few months ago, with the legal problems that they had?
No, this one here, it looks like that the title company, because I do know a lot of times to where, like, the dealerships, they either underpay or overpay, and then the owner comes in to where they, because the clerk cannot actually just come in and void it, they have to come before you, and then the treasurer actually refunds them money.
And I hate to put you on the spot, but there's nobody on the call from their office, so that's why I'm asking.
I should, Joe should probably answer that, because I don't, I, I'll tell you, as far as financials go, they've put a lot of securities in place on that, to where, say, this is another reason for, they can't refund anything. But they can't reverse anything now, only their security put in place right now. This is telling you now.
Thank you, true.
Okay, as far as this, I think this is just either an overpayment, it looks like it says on registration, and we can't do it right there through drives, it has to come from board, and then the treasurer refunds them.
With all the supporting documentation attached to make the refund.
Correct, and then when I send the financials to the treasurer, then she can refund them.
Yes.
So it takes about a month for anybody to get the money out.
Thank you for the clarification. With that said, I'll entertain the motion to move to approve OBCC number six-nine-eight-two to All Title Services, Cobra Lee, for a hundred and forty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents.
Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yes. Item eight I, consideration of OBCC number sixty-nine eighty-three to Montever for one hundred dollars. And I think it's, we have the document attached of repayment on registration renewal, and what I'll reach out to the attorney in the court of office to be available for any questions that may come up at these meetings. Any discussion, any comments, otherwise, I'll entertain the motion.
Move for approval of OBCC number six-nine-eight-three to Montever for a hundred dollars.
Second.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yes. Item eight J, consideration of OBCC number sixty-nine eighty-four to Danny and Tamara King for thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents.
See, and this was an overpayment from the dealership.
Yep.
See, so that's why it's just different things that come across.
Discussion, comments, otherwise, I entertain the motion.
Make motion to approve OBCC number six-nine-eight-four to Danny and Tamara King for thirty-one dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second motion.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yes. Item eight K, consideration of the purchase of five tractor trailers slash trucks from a Canals Truck Center via state award three-one-one zero-zero-one-six-one-nine. Mr. Dornikat?
Commissioner, before you, for your consideration is purchases of five tractor trailer trucks from a Canals using state award three-one-one zero-zero-one-six-nineteen. I'd ask the board to approve this consideration. If we order the trucks now, we may receive them in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. The longer we wait, the longer we'll wait on getting the trucks. The board approved the purchases of five bottom dump, belladup trailers a few meetings back, and these trucks then will be pulling those trailers, and it's time to get these trucks in, then we'll go get selling our tractor trailers that we have right now, but these new units will be replaced.
Wow. Are these trucks, Governor, to where they can only reach a certain speed? I'm reading the MPH on these miles per hour.
Not that I'm worried, Commissioner, when I read through theirs, their drivers wanted to have one of their largest engines in them so they can pull the heels. And so, no, I don't believe they are, Governor.
Any more comments, questions?
And the funding's coming from where?
It'll come from the road bridge next, next year.
Next year, right?
And, and part of the sales tax is road bridges.
Two hundred thousand.
With that, I'll move for approval of purchase of five tractor trailers trucks from a Canals Truck Center via state award three-one-one zero-zero-one-six-one-nine.
Second motion.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yes, and you know, one of the good point to highlight is that the state award, this, the state of Colorado collects bids from across vendors, and they vet these vendors thoroughly, and that is the best governmental process out there for counties and state government municipalities, so that's really great. They do a lot of the work for us, and pretty much in a sense, ready for us to go bring your basket and pick up your items, so I like that. Item number nine, financial matters, consideration of bills and payroll for the second half of February two thousand and twenty-two.
Payroll as of February twenty-eighth, one hundred and seventy-one thousand, one thirty-two and forty-six cents. Do you have any questions on payroll? Bills paid on February sixteenth, seventy-two thousand, four sixty-three, forty-seven. There was nothing unusual that we paid in that packet. Bills paid on February twenty-third, forty-six thousand, four oh three and forty-six cents. Nothing to reach your attention, just normal bills that we pay one week.
Any questions on the board? Otherwise, I will entertain the motion to approve financials.
Motion to approve bills and payroll for the second half of February twenty-two.
Second motion, I'm sorry, I'm sitting here asleep.
Commissioner Hess?
Yes.
Commissioner Luis Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete Solzner?
Yes. Item number ten, executive session. The board will need an executive session under CRS twenty-four dash six four oh two four. B, confirmed with county attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions. Item A, SEC O G, whose letter? B, New Elk, Home Line, Company Well, and C N. C, courthouse security cameras? D, R F P courthouse face three improvements? E, all shot. Intervene motion to move to executive session?
Still moved.
Oh.
There were some, there was some.
Tom Tree and.
Okay, so we will add also the chemistry and noise degree, right, this is where I have all my. Now, thank you so much for that.
And a ten minute recess?
Yes. Yes.
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Luis Sotis?
Yes.
Commissioner Hens?
Yes.
Commissioner Felix Sotis?
Yes.
Are you guys gonna come out and vote?
No.
Hey, Ben?